On our computer. The, I have no problem in, in changing that. The idea here was to present a framework in which it could be further modified by future councils as we see whether this whole thing works and that, that was all. And I was simply trying to limit the availability. That, that was it.
Okay, I thought you weren't going to play those individuals during the meetings anyway, so it wouldn't be a problem, correct?
It's true. It, don't forget, and, and you're correct, Mr. Yoshimoto, when we did limit it to five people, we were thinking originally that perhaps it would be played. But again, this is, uh, don't forget, the whole purpose of this resolution and change, in my mind anyway, was to try to introduce the concept of using video during the course of, uh, the timeframe in which we have testimony and allow the public another venue or another avenue in which to express themselves. Again, I see this only as a test effort, and if it needs to be changed after a couple of council meetings, I think it can be and should be by the new council as we move ahead in the next, the next council session.
Okay, I'm gonna agree with Ms. Ford's comments about, about making it more clear and specific, so, so it's clear on its face. And as far as the submission of video testimony, I think each person should be responsible for submitting their own video testimony if that's what they choose to do, so similar to, I think, in writing. And I, I just think it's a more simplified format, because I think if you started five, an argument could be, well, why not 10 or 20 or what have you. The other, other concern too is this, uh, whether we're gonna have enough time to, to view the video testimony, because, you know, in, in the extreme circumstances, what if we do receive, uh, I don't know, 100, 200 video testimonies on something that's very, uh, controversial? And I don't know that we're gonna have the time, if we get this 12 noon the day before, to view testimony and listen to other testimony and actually deliberate. But like, my concern is this, we need to be able to listen or read all the testimony first before we deliberate. So I don't wanna ever be, if it ever be suggested, well, did you see my video? And, and if it's in a sea of, I wanna say 200 videos, can we practically do that? Whereas if someone comes here, it's their right to testify. They're here in person, they took off time, you know, and so that's the prime consideration for me. So I, I'm just pointing out some extreme circumstances, that's, you know, is possible. Likely, well, hopefully not, but, uh, maybe somebody in this floor can bring up two. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, can I respond? Mr. Hoffman, please. I can understand what Mr. Yoshimoto was saying, but that's no different than if we had 200 written testimonies presented to us on a controversial issue. Can we go through that logically and read all that? Do we do that? You and I both know that we probably don't, uh, spend as much time, uh, on written testimony as we would when we see people, uh, in front of us. The same thing is true here. It's not the quantity of effort that we're doing, it's simply providing the general public with another venue or avenue in which they can participate in county government. And while you're, you're, you are indicating the extreme case in which this could happen, I wanna be able to ensure that the public has the opportunity to do the 95 or 98% of the time and opportunities. I think that's more important. We can always adjust and, and take a look and alter or change or modify these rules to ensure that the extreme cases are handled as well. But Jay, I don't see the difference between 200 video testimonies and 200 written testimonies if the case came to that. So I would only ask that as we move ahead, council colleagues, we give this an opportunity to see whether it will work out. If it doesn't work, the council can always change. That's all we're asking. Thank you. Ms. Smart?
Um, thank you. Mr. Hoffman, I'm gonna disagree with you in the difference between written testimony and video testimony. I can very easily skim a written testimony and pick out a couple of key words or phrases that I may have, and it would be more difficult to do with video. That is not stating that I am changing my support of this. I think this is the way we need to move forward. Um, I would suggest the next meeting, we actually ask our IT department to come here and provide some input on this, uh, maybe to help, um, lead us in the direction of what our systems or what technologies are out there in order to support what we're trying to accomplish. He's very capable and he's got a lot of really good ideas, and he knows the different technologies out there that we could be using. Um, I've talked to him about being able to use Skype or, um, Ustream or other forms of ways for the public to communicate. We're not quite there to those capabilities yet, but he can at least provide us guidance in moving this type of thing forward. I see no problem with him supporting the concept of increased public participation, because if we're not here to do that, then why are we here at all? I will say again, I disagree with what you're saying between written and video, but I do not believe that's a way to stop it. I wanted to answer Jay's question in another way, because I remember, uh, the first time you answered that, um, uh, the question about one person submitting up to five videos. And the way I understood it was, we understand not everyone may have the internet or techno- technological capabilities to record themselves and submit it. And so my understanding of the last conversation we had is, okay, I have a webcam at my house, I have the capabilities of recording people's testimony, so I, my friends that wanna testify can come over to my house, we'll record their videos, and then we'll send them in that way. No more up to five. That was my understanding. Basically, you couldn't get 20 people in a room and line them up one after the other. Okay, now it's your turn to use my own equipment. It, that was my understanding, just trying to acknowledge that some people may want to participate, but may not have the technological capabilities to do so, but putting some realistic limits on how that can be used at the same time. That's my recollection of that point, Mr. Hoffman.
Thank you, Ms. Smart. If we can go ahead with, um, the amendment, and we'll come back to you on the main motion of the amendment. The only reason I'm allowing this to go is because part of the amendment is, uh, one individual may submit video testimony for more, uh, for five people including themselves. That's why I'm allowing the discussion, but we are in the amendment.
Actually, Mr., Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Ms. Smart.
Thank you, on the amendment. Okay. Another, okay, I, I think Ms. Smart's, uh, explanation as far as the five, so you're saying five people can get together and if we could say, we five support Bill, A, B, C. Is that what you're saying?
That was even, I, I wasn't even going that far with my understanding of the conversation. My, whether you were for or against, each person could go to my house and use my camera and my email address to submit their testimony, because they may not have their own webcam or email address. They don't necessarily have to sit down in the same video and do it.
Oh, okay.
They don't even have to be on the same side. They just use that same technology and, and halfway to submit it.
Then, we don't need to limit them, was what you're kinda saying, right? I mean, you could arguably say, for argument's sake, you could have a production studio freshly done, or a simplified version, whatever, you could just get a bunch of people and they all come up and give the three minute videos. That's what you're saying. Right? Doesn't, it doesn't matter that way, whether it's five or 50.
I think the, I think the limit was really just put in by Mr. Hoffman as a starting point to say, to acknowledge that for certain circumstances, maybe it's not prudent to have a meaningful people, you know, you know, submitting one testimony, all, all coming in from the same email address, the same, all that. I think that was just a starting point.
Okay, well.
There. It just recognizes some people may not have the technology and allows them the reason they're still participating in this.
Okay. So as, as far as the numbers concerned, my, my proposal only is that it's a matter of trade for choosing five. I know it's a starting point, but, you know, it is what it is. The other question I guess, or concern I have is this, you know, with pre-recorded video, I don't know what people can do. In other words, you can alter video. You could get, you know, snippets of speech, and I, I'm just being, uh, you know, the what if. Meaning, you could get, you could probably compile a videotape of someone without their permission, and, so my concern is this, if, if it's pre-recorded, how do we know it's authentic? That's the question. Now, it's, it's extreme, I know, but it's possible, right? Here, you have someone here, they're gonna be testifying, you can see them face to face, they can see us. Written, they sign their name, it's, it's, you know, there's some authentication there. And maybe I'm going to, the legal aspect of, you know, when you present evidence to a court, you have to authenticate that what you're saying, you're presenting is true. So it's, it's, it's probably a little extreme, but I'm just saying that, you know, if someone wants to create a video, especially of us, because you have tons of video of us speaking, and you could choose words and, I don't know, I, I'm just probably being a little extreme and, you know, I don't mean to be that way, but, you know, I'm just looking at the possibilities. Thank you.
I'll go to Ms. Ford very soon, but I'm gonna remind everybody, this is an amendment, and we need to take care of the amendment. If folks wanna speak to the, uh, main motion, that's fine. The difficulty here that I'm having, and this item presents, is that I believe it's premature at this time and need to be studied a bit more. So the discussion on the floor here, though, interesting, is certainly problematic, and so I'm gonna go ahead and continue this discussion. And Ms. Ford, uh, go ahead, because I have some comments on this item also, on this floor. Again, on the amendment, which simply says, let's amend Rule 13. That's all it simply says. Let's deal with the business and move on.
I want to talk about the main motion, so I'm not gonna talk about this anymore. And besides which, you should have the right to say what you wanna say, but before I go into my second round of the venue zone, I feel I'm not gonna talk.
Okay. Thank you very much. Again, this amendment is just a simple motion to amend Rule 13 to allow, there's some directions, and especially the part that allows, uh, five people including the individual themselves to present items. But there's things that are concerned that are not here. You can go ahead and amend this, and it's likely to be approved. Go ahead and approve this amendment. The problems does not lie here with this video portion. It lies in fairness, will we then amend the verbal portion, and will we then amend the written portion? Those other changes to, to the same rule needs to apply too. If you say, uh, the video guys can do up to five, then we should also say, the all-in, uh, uh, verbal guy should be able to give five too, and so should the written. So that's one thing we should consider. The other thing that's really, nobody's talking about is that, if we're gonna treat the video testimony same as written, there still needs to be some structural changes within council services to make this apart. So that needs to be considered too. Uh, again, I do think this is premature and should have been thought out or discussed, uh, by staff a little bit longer, and the discussion should not be on the floor of this committee. Ms. Ford, you have the floor.
Okay. This is just a generic comment, and I agree with Ms. Smart that not everybody has the video camera type technology in their home or their business to handle people doing this. Frankly, the fact that it comes from one email address means absolutely nothing to me. Because five people could go with their written testimony, have somebody scan it and use their computer to ship it across the internet. So to me, it's immaterial. That's, to me, is not an issue. Um, if somebody has this kind of capability and wants to provide a public service, and let people come over to their home, their business, record them up to three minutes and ship it via internet to us, no problem. Um, however, if we were to allow them to put, I'm picking five because that's the number in here, five videos, three minutes each, I don't know how much memory that would take. Personally, I just don't know the answer to that. But I can tell you, when you get two large, um, uh, file coming through just in written documents, sometimes it can't get through the server. And that's, so I think it's really good that Ms. Smart has asked that Mr. Al come in from IT and have a chat with us. For that reason alone, I would be a little concerned about letting five people, because the, the rule is, or the law is, I'm not sure which is, which is correct, you could talk three minutes on each item on an issue. So if you have five communications, that's three minutes plus the main issue. So somebody could go on for, for, you know, hours if there were a lot of item, agenda is communications, creating a huge video file that our servers may not be able to handle, certainly my computer, piece of garbage that it is, could not handle that. So I think we've gotta be careful not to overwhelm the system. So I agree with Mr. Yoshimoto that each person should do their three minutes, and if it comes from, um, internet address XYZ dot com, or, or 15 different people, I don't care, as long as it's an individual person on each of the middle, so that we're not overwhelming our system. Um, so I do think we need to address that. I agree with Mr. Pivago, however, that if we're going to allow five, then we should allow five for width or five for width. I don't wanna go there. I don't think that's what we need to be doing. So I would like to drop this back one. I'll, I'll make this amendment, um, and deal with that issue. So I agree with parts of everybody's comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ford, for the willingness to make the amendment. My understanding is we're gonna move to the floor now. No comments, discussions?
Mr. Clerk. Communication 786.1 is a amendment to Rule 13. Please call. Mr. Glass. Ms. Ford.
Aye.
Mr. Hoffman. Mr. Keta.
Aye.
Ms. Smart.
Aye.
Ms. Yashimoto. Chair Yagor. Chair Yagor, you have the eight eyes.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Go back to the main motion, uh, Resolution 279-4, as a matter of fact. Mr. Hoffman, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, let me remind, uh, council colleagues, the purpose of this effort, as I originally envisioned, was to simply answer the question, does the council wish to include the public participation with video testimony? The details and the specifics regarding how and what we do to get there, or how we implement that, really was not part of my original intent here. Uh, I tried to frame some of the comments based on our discussion, but really, the only question I was trying to resolve was, does the council feel it's time to include video testimony? I suggest that the resolution that we look at, do not try to go into the specific dotting of the i's and t's and go through an extensive conversation regarding how this is to be implemented. We can lead that to staff, to IT, to Jeffon, and to others who are clearly more competent to, uh, handle this than us sitting here around this table. Further, the idea was to try it for a certain period of time before the end of this term, this council term, and then allow the next council to determine whether they wish to continue, based on the results of whatever few opportunities we had to take a look at this. So again, council members, I, I feel that if we spend an inordinate amount of time trying to define, uh, the specifics to take care of the extreme case in which some of these things might happen, we're, we're defeating the purpose of what we, of what the original intent was. Do we want video testimony? I think we've said, yes, we do. How we implement that, I leave to the technical experts. Thank you.
Thank you, council member. Chair Yagor.
Thank you very much, Ms. Chairman. Well, my understanding of this whole thing was whether or not the council would agree to receive video co- video testimony, um, during our regular sessions, whether it be during committee or during council. That was the original intent of the, of the, uh, resolution. And of course, me ever said concerns about that because of how we would possibly extend the duration of the meetings, and, and of course, how you can implement it, like Mr. Hoffman just said, and, and of course, even, even the cost that, that would entail if we were to put a program together. Now, the resolution has moved away towards that and make it very clear that we're talking about receiving information, uh, that's not gonna be part of the actual meetings, which I think is good, you know? But, I mean, I, I think anytime we open up the avenues for more people to participate and more people to communicate with the council, it's a good thing. It can never be a bad thing if we open that up. But at the same time, we've got to really understand, uh, how we are going to implement that process, because it could come at the cost of either needing more staff, or even, I mean, you know, we talked about the webcam. You know, not, not everyone has webcam, so the only other way is for someone to actually video something, put it on a disc and send it in to us. So what does that mean? Does that mean that the individual that sends the disc in has to make nine copies? Or do they send one copy? And now the county of White now gotta make nine copies for everybody? You know, that's a cost. Or do we take that disc and we put it on LaserFish, and if you wanna go read it, go read it? So, uh, you know, I mean, there's a lot of questions, uh, that we, we do need to ask. I think it's a good thing to open up more avenues for communication. But at the same time, I think we also are underestimating our constituency out there. I mean, I gotta, I gotta believe that you folks receive as much phone calls as I do from constituency when it comes to a transitaion. People pick up the phone and they will call you, and they will express, give their concern and support for certain items on the agenda. That will continue to happen. And, uh, you know, if, uh, it'll probably be a lot easier for the constituency just to do that alone. Now, if you do have a webcam, as Ms., uh, Smart suggests, then you can do that right now without even a resolution. I mean, seriously, you could, you could put together a webcast and email it, as long as you know the email address for the council members and email it, and of course, it's up to the council members to open it up and actually watch, watch the video. So, I mean, I think there's ways that, that we can do it, but, uh, I disagree with Mr. Hoffman in terms of, you know, we can just pass it and see what happens, and I think we've got to be able to lay out a process so that the people out there know exactly what is being required of them, or what, uh, is gonna be required of the county. But I will support Ms. Hoffman's effort, because it does open up, uh, more communications. But I think before we pass it at the full council, if it gets there, then we've gotta be more specific as to how this is going to work. And we gotta know whether or not we're gonna have to, we're gonna have to budget for it. With that, I give you my suggestion.
Thank you, Chair Yagor. Council member, your field.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think Ms. Ford brings up a good point in terms of our computers. I'll tell you that it sometimes takes me more than a minute to open up a, a simple program. And one of the things Ms. Ford, you know, when it, uh, this comes up again, is to ask IT, you know, what type of video, whether it's high definition, whether it's, uh, you know what I mean? Because in the higher resolution you get, you know, the white packet has, uh, the storage space, as well as our computers running it. So, uh, you know, it's a good idea, I'm in favor of the idea, but implementation is the key, because we can't, uh, say we're gonna do something and then, you know, can't implement it, because if you don't have either the, the ability technology-wise or, or, uh, any other ways that we need to, uh, implement this. So I think those questions need to be answered before we finally pass this, because otherwise we'd be setting us up for failure for trying to do something we can't. So again, Ms. Ford, so that's the question, you know, what kind of, uh, we need to set parameters specifically is what type of video we can accept, uh, because if it's low-res video, then it'll probably be a lot easier on our service. That's all we have to say. Thank you.
Yeah, Pete, I do support your, your resolution, except for the part where, uh, the rule where you wouldn't buy people. I believe that each one should send your own testimony, video testimony. It's no different when you write a letter, you write, uh, if you can't send a video testimony, you can always call, you can write, you can email. So you don't need more than one. And that's the only thing I disagree with. I agree with everything else. I'll support it if you send it, you change it, I'll support it. Thank you.
Thank you, council member. Council member, Ms. Smart?
Okay, um, I don't think we need to get hung up too much on how it's going to be implemented, because the technology is out there. We don't buy server space. There are always, um, um, online cloud storage, such as Ustream and Livestream. In fact, I think we're being streamed right now, and it's, um, and it gets archived on websites. That, again, is why I think it would be beneficial to have Mark Al participate in our conversation, because we had the same discussions in terms of, like I said, live web streaming. Another aspect that we haven't really discussed here is if we do accept that and it becomes a public record, are we gonna have to transcribe all those videos? Because that is my big holdup on live web streaming, because it's an exponential cost. So hopefully, that won't be too much. I think that would be something court council could help us answer, whether we're gonna have to transcribe all those pu- uh, public videos if it becomes part of the public record. But I don't think we need to get hung up on this. And I'm gonna say one more comment that I disagree with, is that this is premature. I think this is about 10 years too late to be having a starting conversation. So I think, I thank Mr. Hoffman for bringing this forward. I think this important is, uh, this discussion is very important, if we really want to facilitate public, uh, discourse. Um, and don't forget, a lot of people have these smartphones now. I have Skype and video recording capabilities on phones. So maybe it's not, you know, there's, the issue of not being able to send in your own video is only gonna last for so long. Um, the way the technology is moving these days, it's, it's not gonna be an issue for too much longer. It's gonna, the technology is gonna be pretty prevalent, uh, prevalent. And we have to take into consideration the way people are communicating and make sure we are providing those communication streams in the most fair, um, way possible. I don't think this affects the way people email or sit here and testify. We're not allowing people, we're not saying it's okay for you to sit in front of the camera and read testimony for five different people. Those people still have to sit in front of the camera and provide their own testimony, just like we don't let people sit here and read someone else's testimony in front of us. People still have to provide their own testimony. It's just allowing them to use the equipment to make sure that their voices are participating in the process. But again, those are stuff, those are things that can be fleshed out, uh, later in perhaps a conversation with Mark Al. Uh, Kathy, I do have a question for you, based on, uh, one comment that Jay mentioned about people being able to slice videos together. I gotta say, that's something I didn't think of, but, um, especially since there are copyright concerns, uh, if people use copyrighted material and just do a collage of stuff and send it in as their, um, video, I guess when I first read it, I anticipated someone sitting there and reading their testimony, but I guess in the way you're interpreting it, Jay, people can cut video together and make that be a testimony. Uh, do you have any, uh, talking points in the legal, um, side of that, or can I just throw that out to you for maybe next conversation, since you look a little bewildered on that question?
Kathy Garson, Assistant Corporation Counsel, I guess I am a little bewildered. Um, you know, I haven't thought about whether or not there'd be any, any issues. I think it'd be the, the person who's submitting the testimony would have the problem, if there was anything. Um, as far as then, you, you claim that, um, I can't think of, uh, any liability. However, I do think that somebody's gonna have, somebody's gonna have to review the videos, because you can't, because you, I mean, you know, you need to know, uh, you have to have some mechanism for determining then what would be appropriate. Uh, yeah, what would be appropriate? I mean, so, 'cause you're gonna, if somebody sends in something and you say, this is a public testimony, and it's not related at all to the item, or it has something on it that you actually wouldn't want to leave on there?
Yeah, I, I get your point, and Pete's saying, we, we did that already, and, and he's kind of right to some extent, but if we're gonna save it online in a certain section for a specific topic and it's not related, I see where she's coming from. I think that could very easily be remedied in the sense that we also have the standard rules of procedure. We, we base, we are very reactionary already, so I'm sure if we get a complaint on something, it can always be looked at and had a determination. I think proactively having someone look at every single testimony before it's actually posted is a little bit too much expectation at this point in time. Would it have to be transcribed? That's, that's a major conversation we've been having, uh, so far with live web streaming. Would, would these videos have to be transcribed if they're saved as public doc, um, records?
I don't know the, I, I don't know the answer to that, to that question. I, I think what you're referring to is that if, if we, if we post something on our website, and our website needs to be ADA compliant, what sort of, um, what sort of ADA measures would we have to have for the video testimony? So that, I don't know. I, I, it depends on what you're gonna, what you're gonna do with the testimony, if it's just gonna be. what you're gonna, what you're gonna do with the testimony. If it's just gonna be, is it just gonna be archived, and anybody can come and take a look at it, through your website?
These are just, these, these are, these are issues, these are issues to think about. It's, it's how that relates to our compliance with the ADA, that's all. Okay. I see what you're saying. Thank you. Carrie, I, I'm gonna ask you a question real quick, since you're live streaming us and you regularly upload videos. Are other people able to upload to like a Ustream, or a Livestream, or something like that? Are external websites like that allowable to have other people other than yourself upload to them?
Carrie Marks, good morning, everybody. Sorry I was late. Missed all the good stuff. See, but that's another good reason to have video testimony, because Carrie's always late. But yes, almost anybody, there's, there's a half a dozen I can think of off the top of my head, different services that you can use, anybody can use for free to upload videos. YouTube is one of them, Ustream, Livestream, those kinds of things. Is that answered?
Yeah, basically. So really, I, I think the sort, it, it needs to be discussed with IT, but I, I don't think that's a roadblock to this. I know we're getting a little far afield from what's on the table, but I think we need to move this forward at this point in time. If we could get some responses from Corporation Counsel for some of the questions mentioned earlier about transcribing, about some video copyrighted, whatnot. Because I think whether we have, you know, have separate rules and procedures for that kind of thing, I think those are important to have as discussion points as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Smart. You represent what, what, and I?
I represent the people at large.
Very well. Thank you very much for your representation.
Ms. Ford, before you start, let me clarify. I have no problems with open government
or discussion coming in. The very fact that there's so much discussion, and so much disconnected discussion and communication at this point, is because the legal people have not been consulted, the communications people have not been consulted, council services have not been consulted, IT has not been consulted, and that would have been helpful. Those things need to be discussed before it comes to the floor. Awarenesses are based on those things before anything is introduced. But if we're gonna have it on the floor, my staff has contacted Hoffman's staff and said, you know, you're gonna need one or two hours of this item alone, stop implicating and impacting other council items. And I need to stick that in public. That's where it's premature.
Mr. Chairman. Yes, please.
I'll, I'll let, I'll leave the poll.
But I wanna move this on.
My staff, as Mr. Pogal must know, has been in consistent contact with Jeff Han and with others. We did receive a, an email from Mr. Lopez. We responded. We have talked to council services about this. This is not done prematurely. We've had Dave Hurt from my office has worked consistently on this, with a number of people being consulted, OIP, and, and others regarding this. I think that's a little bit of an exaggeration, Mr. Pogal, to say that this was premature from the fact that we hadn't done the work. In fact, the cause of the amendment was generated as a result of the conversation we had in committee on the very first of July. And we, I believe, again, the idea was to answer the question, should we include video testimony? And that was the basic question that we were attempting to respond. So I, I do think that there, this is certainly not premature from the standpoint of trying to move forward. As Ms. Smart points out, we, I'm not sure for ten years we're late, but we certainly could've done this much sooner. And clearly, the technology that we have, we need to move this discussion forward, and we need to try to resolve the issue. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Let's not get sidetracked in premature. The issue in five people. Ms. Ford?
Thank you. I have some additional concerns now. I, I believe we should do this. With that said, I have a lot of questions, I'm not gonna go into all of them, that Mr. Al might be able to answer for us. And I'm not comfortable sending this up to council and taking all that time, unless we can get Mr. Al in here, and Jeff, and all these other individuals who have expertise that I do not have. I believe that we need to have more information on this. You know, just, I'm just gonna make up a, a question, an extreme example. We get somebody that sends in five video testimonies on one transmittal, as in a, an email transmittal or something, internet transmittal, and one of them turns out to be something disgusting that we wouldn't want on our website. Do we have to delete all five, or just the one that's obscene? Okay. So I don't know the answer to those questions. I don't know what staff can or cannot do, because none of us get into that stuff. I also, I also am concerned about the financial aspects of this. If we need to put money into the next budget for this, then we need to do that. I don't have a problem doing a trial and find out, you know, how things work. But I wanna hear from Mr. Hoffman as to OIP's recommendation, do we have to caption it? And frankly, I don't think the county should be responsible for captioning that. I really don't. I think if you're gonna send in video testimony, maybe the sender should have to caption it. I don't know if they've got that kind of capability out there in the world. I, I'm really quite handicapped in making a decision at this time because of my lack of expertise. But I gotta tell you, we're near the middle of the, no, we're just starting a new, a new fiscal year, and I don't know if our budget has enough money for having somebody review these things, if that becomes necessary, or, you know, stripping out one thing that's inappropriate to be on our website. There's a lot of questions that I have, and I really think, before this goes forward to council, that I would like to have the IT director come in. So I'm gonna wait till everybody's finished. I am gonna make that postponement request, and if it falls on the floor and dies, that's okay. But I really think we have a lack of information here that I'm uncomfortable with financially and IT-wise. So with that, I'm gonna give it.
Mr. Hoffman?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. In order to move the agenda along, I'll make the motion to postpone further discussion on this amended resolution until the eighteenth of September. We-
Can I move, I miss so often, to postpone it to September second, if my chair, you go on this question?
Just very briefly, we will have, we will invite Mr. Al to come forward. We will make the adjustment that Mr. Decatur had suggested. And I'm not quite certain what other adjustments we'll make. I think it's more answering questions. So I would ask that we postpone further discussion on this today. The important fact is, we agree, video testimony should be part of our public participation. With that in mind, we can move forward and find solutions. Thank you.
Additional further discussion? Deputy clerk, please read the motion to postpone and call the floor.
Mr. Blas.
Aye.
Ms. Ford.
Aye.
Mr. Hoffman.
Aye.
Mr. Kater.
Aye.
Ms. Dung.
Aye.
Mr. Dung.
Aye.
Mr. Yoshimoto.
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Blas, you have nine ahs.
Resolution two seven nine dash four, postpone. What is the date of it? September eighteenth? Thank you very much. Communication seven eight seven, resolution two eighty dash twelve, urges the Hawaii State Legislature to adequately fund both the Hawaii Campaigns Committee Commission and the statewide comprehensive public funding system-